Call this meeting in order, let the record show all council members, their president will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have three additions to the agenda. Uh, number nine will be the uh, you know, on the cable franchise transfer and that's resolution, resolution uh, one zero dash zero six dash twenty twenty five. Clarification, it has a B, there is no A, so it's just without the letter. Uh, number ten is uh, utility um, service hole rehab.
Say that again?
Sanitary sewer.
I try not say manhole.
Just say sanitary.
Sanitary sewer. Yeah. And eleven is a street closure on October twenty nine for the Linden Fest kind of annual thing uh, between, uh, twenty ninth street between Broadway and London. Are there any other additions to the agenda?
Well, yeah.
Your motion to approve?
Okay.
Any further, for home favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, no motion carried. In your minutes are the uh, in your packets are the minutes of the regular meeting of September fifteen and the uh, special meeting of September eleven, twenty twenty five, are there any additions and corrections regarding those minutes? During none of those then stand approved the sprint to move on to the claims and there's the uh, the sheet with the uh, ones that came in since the agendas went out.
Good D S I come in today. So they always send those with those packets of draw requests that I do. Um, there was one that I just did like on Thursday, but I can't remember the amount, so I have just um. Yeah, I don't know why they would stay, I've never done that before.
But that will be, yeah.
The date on the invoice. Well, it would be after, if mine were dated nine fourteen or whatever, so. We'll get them. Thank you.
Hey, are there any uh, questions or comments on any of the claims? Your motion to approve the claims?
A mo.
The second? And Blake, any further discussion, if not all in favor, say aye.
Right.
Right. Those no motion carried. Uh, anything for notices and communication?
Negative.
Uh, pending, anything we want to touch on there?
No.
All right, we do have a department head report.
Yes, Chris unable to be here tonight, I printed off her emails, I also forwarded that on, so. Uh, total daily attendance for the twenty twenty five season, eight thousand four hundred and seventy five, nine private parties, totally nine hundred and seventy five people attending, um, six hundred and thirty five people for the aerobics in the morning, three hundred and fourteen in the afternoon, two hundred and thirty one group lessons, sixty in private and uh, our total of two hundred and ninety one kids in uh, lessons. Total attendance including lessons, aerobics and private parties of ten thousand six hundred and ninety. And you can see the comparison uh, to the twenty twenty four uh, season, everything is up, which is good. It was a good, a good season, weather wise as well.
Impressive. All right, anything else, make comments? Not, we'll move on then to new business and that is a uh, request for approval of a gambling permit from Curry Town and Country at Backyard Bar and Grill.
Yes, in the application, it does reference an L G two fifteen lease for local gambling activity, that's not in front of you, but they do have that lease with uh, the owners and uh, lessor of the property there, so that's all been verified.
Do we have a motion?
Just a question, I know it's not signed, is it supposed to be signed by the applicant, applicant?
It's signed by us and then the lease between the um, Curry Town and Country and them are that side. This, yes, chief executive officer, yeah, Ed Swedman will sign that after we sign it and then they'll send it off.
Is there a motion? A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Right, aye.
Oppose, no, motion carried, next item, we have uh, airport zoning agreement.
Um, little task order number one with ballack engineering for a total of fifty one thousand dollars, you can see on page three there, um, ninety five percent of this been covered by the state of Minnesota, has been approved for like this whole year or so.
Your motion?
A mo.
A second? Any further discussion? If not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no, motion carried, night, next item is we have a proposed contract from Eric Spokeless for the uh, twenty twenty six, twenty twenty seven accessory.
You can see Eric's explanation there, four point nine percent, uh, price remains flat over the, over the contract, which um, usually that, there wasn't a slight delay there on the second, so it's always been a two year contract, but he always had a percentage or so um, for that second year, so a little higher increase, but flat for the second year.
There's no question, do you have a motion?
A mo.
A second?
Second.
Uh, second from Blake, uh, any further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, no motion carried, um, water project on uh, pine, Weston.
I'm here.
Great.
Um, it's kind of a lengthy topic, but nothing too crazy, so. Timeline wise, um, if you guys remember last year, we had that two block area of pine that we got like four breaks in a matter of a week, really odd deal. Um, the initial, that area, it just so happened to be kind of on our next to do list for not necessarily new water projects before replacing cast iron, um, that kind of southwest corner, southeast corner town, pardon me, has always been kind of our bigger area for breaks and stuff, so. Um, what we decided to do was last October, we couldn't let that go through winter, we got it done, everything went really, really great. Um, no issues there whatsoever, so kind of the plan was for this year then to finish off the last south part of the block, um, for some history there. I've thinking of my first two or three years here, so about ten years ago, we had a break on that specific spot, we haven't had one since, it hasn't been like a, you know, this is a terrible, terrible, terrible spot, we gotta get this done, it's just more kind of in line, let's piece that together, it's new from a project we did in two thousand thirteen on the south end of that block, you guys could think of where that grid turns to gravel there at the end pine, so we kind of be piecing in two new chunks together by finishing that block, it's about six hundred and sixty feet. So we were kind of planning on doing that this year, now when Blake and Josh and I met, um, we're at budget time, so it would have been late July, early August, we got talking about some of the financials of it and kind of decided, well, it might be best for us to, if possible, push this off until twenty twenty six, we just said, great, no problem, we'll get a bunch of other stuff done this fall that we haven't been, we can push that off, then some things changed. Um, money moved around and now it is an option to still do it this year, so with that being said, um, we can get it done, um, I, I like projects like this, these are fun for me. Um, but it takes time, even if we get B and H to do the boring, if we get Spartas to do the digging, uh, we have to do all the temp service stuff, we gotta patent pests, we gotta chlorinate and there's a lot of work involved with that, a lot of time, it'll, it'll take a couple of weeks to get everything done. I think I can, if we approve to do it tonight, I think it sounded like Corin may have had the majority of the parts in stock, I think I could have the parts here end of week, maybe even get started by next week, which I think is the thirteenth? Somewhere in there, and timeline wise, it's not quite as big as that project last year. I think in a week to two weeks, the project could probably be pretty close to being wrapped up. Those guys can get in there right away, which both outfits, B and H said, yep, we can do it, no problem, whenever you decide, we're good either way, Spartas did say they would prefer spring, but they said they dropped everything to get it done, to help us out, so we're good there, um. So yeah, it can be done personally, just from my perspective, as a public works director from time, it wasn't scheduled, which is fine, not a big year, we can get it. There's a lot of other stuff I'd like to get done this fall, we haven't really trimmed trees really well in like eight years, um. Guys start using a lot of vacation, we're getting started on flushing hydrants, flushing sewers, just even the streets that swept with leaves, I mean, I can go on and on, last year Darwin had knee surgery, we didn't get any of the parks mulched up, so in the spring, it was a disaster trying to clean all the parks up, took way more time, I'd like to get that. There's a lot of stuff I'd like to get done if I didn't have to do the project, because this will take up a, you know, cleanup, all the stuff involved with that will do. So if you, you know, made me pick, I would pick, let's just do it next year, I don't think it's urgent, uh, there's no issues there. However, if you guys want to see it done, we'll get it done, so just keep that in the back of your minds, I know you guys aren't always studying our work every single day of your life, what we do and don't get done. But there's stuff that I won't probably be able to accomplish, we gotta get ready for winter, we got trucks to get ready and fuel filter, things change, I mean, we can do that all after the project, it's it's fine, we'll be fine, so kind of put the ball in your court, if you have questions, ask away, whatever you guys think, I, I guess have you really followed up with Josh, obviously the money is not, it's, it's fine, we can get it done for that dollar amount they gave me.
The main concern was not operating in the red for this year, it was knowing that we weren't putting tire streets for the next year and being that's our water concrete enterprise fund, um, it doesn't, you know, reset with the levy like the other fund and so, um, trying to just be a little bit more uh, fiscally responsible there, but we um, obviously have a solid concrete plan moving forward to fix that uh, issue in the water sewer fund and so, yeah, I fiscally see no problem at all with this. Um, and Weston, you know, I, I encouraged Weston to say his uh, opinion about timeline and priorities and stuff and yeah, it's a similar defer to counsel to, to make the call, I don't think it's gonna if, if we had to really frustrate anybody either way, so.
No, correct, absolutely not, we'll, we'll do whatever, if, if we had said at budget time, like, okay, yeah, let's do this, the project would have been done. You know what I mean, it's not, we did it last year, we scrambled, we got it done, it was great, that's not how I would have timed it up, I would have gotten all parts and stuff, we would have started in September and then not had to worry about it this late in the year.
It would have to be from this hydrant to this hydrant.
Basically hydrant to hydrant there, yep.
Uh, this one here, this is twenty ninth and pine and this is third, excuse me, thirtieth and pine and this is thirty.
Technically on the north end, we do have to get to the north side of that boulevard, we've got a valve sitting right at that northwest intersection, just waiting to be hooked into, so they would bore right into that, it'd be a hole in that intersection and then, you know, any holes in the middle, whatever, but, and then a hole on the other end, yep, yep, right there, yep. We have a valve there, so it'll all be bored in, obviously, that's the beauty of this project is, you remember last year and a lot of them, even though we had B and H bore all the services across, there were still some areas we had to dig in the road and stuff like that. We won't have to disturb any asphalt here, that old main, it's in the road on north of thirtieth, it does venture over into the boulevard towards where Ron Barren's is there, um, so the tie in at the end, we wanted to dig up the road and just dig that up and then these numbers that you see are probably all projected with boring each service brand new across, getting it new to the curb stuff, just like we did this year. So from that standpoint, there's no high diaphragms are newer, there's some hydrants to replace, it's not a incredibly difficult project together, really. Just get some parts and get enough line board in and do a tie in.
Maintenance wise, this, if I understand correctly, this isn't what you label a highly problematic section currently.
Not now, but if we're, we kind of went over this a little bit in our meeting, if we're making kind of a schedule on where we're gonna attack next to get rid of cast and air, this would be my next, but we get this done and then we move over to Oak, Oak is new after thirtieth and then new on the north end of Oak and then there's like three blocks in between that are still orange cast iron. Then we move on to those areas, much like we are now, but as far as, yeah, it's not, you know, no issues standing like Blake asked at that meeting, how many water breaks do we have last year? One technically, two was, one was kind of a weird one and one was over on Garden. Ever since we switched to V F D's on the wells, those have gone down very slowly, we still get a year, we have five or six, we used to have. Um, and I think it's attributed to that, the different stuff of the plant on the well, but also just getting rid of some of these problematic areas. Good steps, even if, you guys know this, I don't have you say this, but even if we're not having a lot of breaks, getting the cast in the holes, especially in the four inch, it's a plus.
I guess I, if it's not an emergency, I, and you've got, sounds like plenty of other things that you got put off last year that you didn't get done this year, you know. Oh yeah, you know, I, I think it'd be nice to focus on your winter prepping, your fall cleanup for parks and trimming trees, you know, that's a lot of time too, you know.
Yeah.
Um, I also like the idea, rather than digging in the fall than over the winter, you know, the, it does, it doesn't calm down nice in the wintertime.
Probably is a gun, I don't think.
You know, I need all the, where you dig there.
Yeah, you can, you can look at that a whole lot of the what's the increase gonna be next year? Yeah, that's a, I would actually hear about that, now mine gets cheaper. I don't know, you know, uh, the contractors could very easily go up, you know, dollar amount per linear foot. I can guarantee you, because I'm seeing it every year, the pipe's gonna go up, um, significantly, it hasn't been crazy, like last year went from like fifteen fifty to just under seventeen per linear foot, I can't, it was much cheaper than that, you know, ten years ago, so yeah, you know, you're not wrong there Dean, it, it will, there will be increases for sure. What did we do it last year? October it was.
It was, it was a long break started, look at that, the break started happening, the first one was like September twenty fourth.
Like, okay, weird break, you know, that's wild, then we had like three more in a week and so we scrambled, had a meeting, we didn't get started till the beginning.
If it was post four o'clock, Weston did not like to see my phone.
Oh, that was a rough stretch. I can say this too, in speaking with Darwin and between my years and then Darwin, there's like forty years ago, they've never seen anything but that cast iron get old, you know, you just don't know it. We have the storage space that we were going to buy the, buy the stuff now.
That was my question, next question.
Well, yeah, it's gonna sit outside, right, I mean, we've got that locked up. Yeah. And bound out there, that's the funniest place in it, so, yes, hundred percent.
We could, I mean, we're gonna spend the money either way, we could hedge that, but if it's later, um.
You know, just be the contractors.
Yeah.
Right, well, Spartas.
Yeah.
Would prefer to go in the spring anyway. Yeah, and like I said, they will, whatever decision you guys make, they will, yeah, they will also. And I talked to Dave Brown the day two and Nate, it would be an agent, they said, you know, if they, B and H has everything to do basically this entire, ground up and down, um, it's more of a time thing, I think, where they just come in, get the boring done, and move on in our projects, but they said they wouldn't be able to in that regard, as far as like, hey, you know, we only have a couple of days here, we really gotta go get something, we would be, it'd be okay, and we could too, they said, we're gonna be helping, we're gonna be bringing blocking and, yeah. Also working around the project and go.
At least the pipe anyway, I mean, if you don't want to, the, you know, the brass, brass and stuff to sit outside, we don't have to buy that, but the pipe now and store it out there or it's gonna be out of the way.
Yeah, the, the, the pipe would be the biggest thing, just with room that I would have to peel aside, the other stuff we could still buy.
Yeah. Yeah. I guess that's the way that I'd leave, you know, let's wait till.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, let's wait till spring and, but buy the, buy the stuff now and
Yeah.
Get everybody on board to where we, soon as the process.
I think it'd be a first thing, that project, and then if there are still funds to do even more, consider doing more next year too. I saw him make that motion.
Okay, your second?
Let's start with that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Chris, no.
Eight. Further discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, no motion carried. All right.
No, I was gonna.
We're gonna motion.
Yeah, yeah.
There's been a lot of mulch, mulches.
Everybody's pretty ambitious tonight. Uh, little public workshop, right? That's the next one?
Yes, I had uh, attorney counsel that says proposal, it's a gift card to the wedding that I went to was taken. Um, proposal board for Architecture Incorporated, uh, you can see they estimate the project per hour, multiple discussions at a million or less, and they're asking for ten percent of the total construction cost. Um, I will skip ahead because I am sure there will be some discussion on that, but then just the topo uh, proposal from D G R, I mean, you know, six thousand dollars uh, flat there in the second. Gee, so the topo probably would be beneficial to have no matter what scope or route we go for design or what type of building we do, uh, so that I would like to do, um, I think the Architecture Incorporated proposal uh, is certainly up for um, discussion. Um, they came back for a second meeting virtually with Weston and I. Uh, Weston had provided all of the groundwork, uh, or planning work that he had done, which was extensive up to them and they kind of went and shopped that around to a bunch of contractors and building, prefab building people and um, they were honestly in the neighborhood of double this, they're like one point nine million dollars, I think is what they had.
I think that's steel.
On steel, um, and then that was uh.
Yeah.
So then we went with wood or whatever and they said it's still gonna be in, which.
Such things you can get it on your million, but great, you know, if you guys remember my proposals, I think we were pushing like seven hundred dollars in. I did my best to include every cost, yeah, I, I understand how things work, it could very well fluctuate from that number to
eight.
Eight fifty, whatever, but millions is where.
The point that was stated by multiple council members last time, I say I can't remember if it was in a meeting or side of the meeting, but it is just a shed.
Right.
And I, we took that to heart and we, we both agreed, honestly, even a million dollars seems really a little lot of stress.
I mean, like ten percent is, oh, for engineering on a shed, that's ridiculous.
That's unbelievable, so.
I mean, so, bullshit, you know. Yeah.
I haven't had a chance to talk to either one of you, but when we did the last, the two thousand and seven public workshop, the lumberyard.
Yeah.
Yeah. He still has that in his.
He does, he talked about it.
Um, at any rate, uh, just to, so that building was built in uh, two thousand and seven, we spent two hundred and one thousand and some change on that building.
Yep.
And what we were looking at is basically tripling the size of it or adding, okay?
Yeah.
Well, but at any rate.
And no messing.
No.
But maybe it's small.
I've got that picture right here, uh. The existing shop is sixty by, I thought it was a hundred, that was just guessing, it's actually a hundred and five.
Yeah, it's just.
To build that exact same shop, like we just wanted another one of them, or the exact same thing, uh, me and Troy estimated about seventy thousand dollars for uh, the concrete and footings, hundred and twenty thousand for materials.
Still like.
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars in materials, seventy five thousand in labor, twenty five for electrical and twenty five for plumbing and heating, which that's three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Yeah, I mean, I literally did the exact same thing with Troy on the building we want, he broke that all down for me and then I took an added in removal, some new fancy stuff, like, you know what I mean, tar, all the others, that's where I got that number, I think it was five hundred and eight. So, and that was everything. You know what I mean, that's a bunch of tar, that's new oil containment, new bulk diesel containment, um, I really tried to get everything and flopped lifts, maybe a new lift, I added a new lift in there, which I don't necessarily think we need, but you know what I'm saying, it was, it was from ground up to that was including the salt and sand shed too Blake, that building one of that, and I came up with five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. He had, Troy gave me last year sixty dollars per square foot. What these people are estimating is like a hundred and eighty.
That's crazy.
So well Weston, uh, after that discussion with uh, Arch Inc., we both kind of looked at each other and said, well, this is so you've started talking.
Yeah, I reached all.
Just some, you know, more, more fancy, whatever, you know.
And if you just build our shit, let's be gone, it's just S P M, I can't hear them, any noise that changes.
Well, that was true, that's uh, that Buffalo Ridge, they worked, they did all sorts of, what was superior to, superior buildings.
Okay, there's, there's still, she know, like, there's tons of people, so my first question was, was, I haven't gone to Troy over here. It's like, I know you have a file on exactly who that whole thing went down with in two thousand and seven and you can see clearly the lumberyard, everything together and everything was set up, forbidden, whatnot, like, they're willing to do that again, like, rather, obviously, any other than that, do you really have to go there? You buy the builder.
Roll that in that like.
Three hundred and fifteen thousand. To build an exact same
Same size.
Size of what we.
Anything below three hundred and fifty doesn't have to be architecture same.
Right, but we want to build enough.
Well, the one thing though, true, and this is not that I was trying to negate the whole bidding process, but what's our budget, I mean, what realistically, what are we all doing?
What's in the, it's knowing that we were in a bond for it, but the budget was basically what he had said, that six hundred thousand dollars, whatever. That's the budget, it's how we got this, that would change the budget, it just changed the discussion, if that makes sense. Whether it's six hundred or a million or two million.
We're in the, we're in the process, we're in the process of uh,
doing some work at our plant right now in Sioux Falls, and we're working with, with Reeves Building Systems over there, um, and we're putting on a sixty by sixty addition onto our shop.
Yeah.
Basically, there, there's gonna be office space, the twelve foot side walls, or twelve roof, but it's a, just basically, it's a wood frame, panelized metal building addition at sixty by sixty and for the gel, including windows, um, and the labor to put it up, um, and the interior walls of the offices framed in with labor is eighty eight thousand dollars.
I don't see my bad.
No.
So. Now you're just need some steel, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, that's, that's, yeah, drywall, but I mean, you, you get your plumbing, electrical and your bricks. You know, that, that finishes, but I mean,
yeah, no, I, I think the consensus is we're done with architect.
Yeah.
That's the way to.
We're, we're not building a stadium.
I don't wanna, so simplify things for like, as far as I can, now I can give you my idea of actually constructing it, if I'm not as we not like coming up with first list, all the stuff, the bulbs that, the, the thing we gotta kind of talk about. When we did it the last time, we basically said, hold on here. Okay, uh, if we're gonna do that, that eliminates Reeves and SBI and some.
Not this, certainly, if this sheets in there, we can not hold.
I mean, are they gonna want some fee putting it together? Well, I think, I mean, I don't think you guys or anyone, it's necessarily most of some sort of fee, but a hundred thousand.
Right, 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 I just, you know, we want, we wanna, we wanna buy local as much as we can, but at the same price, I don't wanna pay.
Yeah, I get it.
Thirty percent, thirty percent more to. To buy it.
Weston and I discussed this exact scenario that we're discussing right now, so as we, we've done it with their piece, not so much buildings, but. Where we know what we. And so spec sheet is a spec sheet. And then spec sheet goes out as the bid spec, and then. Whatever bids spits and chances are, you get exactly what you want from who you. Got some help putting the bids back together, right, well, that, this is no. Different, except it's, uh, um. I'll use the word better, but easier because it's not a fire truck where we're looking for super specific things. Where it's, it is just a pole shed. And so, um, to Blake's point. We did get four or five bids back then, just based on the stuff, slate building materials prep, so if. Says Jason with his drafting partner already told Weston, like, if you want me to go further than this, it's gonna start being some. Some fees, which is.
You guys remember he did give us.
And so he can flesh out the design a little bit more and slate building. Materials list, I mean, that's two pieces to the puzzle, they're the two main pieces to the puzzle, but I'll bid. I don't think we need construction admin or management out of pole shed, I don't think.
We, actually, we shouldn't. Not exactly quite call it a pole shed, this is the whole design, but this has, from what Troy remembers, and I was gonna. This has a whole footing around that. So it's not an actual submission.
Yeah, it's a, it's a wood frame steel structure. The insurance design will last them. When you give it all through my soul. Yeah, um. I agree with what Josh says, that I think that's all. Financial perspective, but really just overall.
And I look at those, those services have value, but I don't think.
So let's do this, let's even hold off. Slate building.
What? What's your feeling, uh, what do we need?
Good grades and points of reference, but if.
We don't need that either. Because what are grading, our, our points of reference is gonna be. The same level as the other building. Take a laser and shoot that.
Footage, that we could do the new building on was, you know, using the setbacks and stuff. Lots of flat.
No, I don't think this.
I mean, you got maybe a footfall across the whole thing.
And I don't see any.
Sewer and waters there, when we tear that building down, we'll cap that on, right, if the bathrooms, the bathroom, probably not gonna end up exactly where the old one was. Not that hard to extend some sewer and water to where you need it.
You see that, that six thousand forward, see if we need to pay some fees for.
Right, there you go.
So much more sense to me too.
I'd be surprised if between Jason and over yard.
Right.
Well, and that's what I, because I'm. Have some empathy toward the whole notion of going through all this work and then getting knocked out.
Yep.
Um, for both the city and, yeah, but I, I. Had gotten this, I stopped in late on Friday and I talked to Troy, I'm like, you know, I said. We pay for soft costs all the time, I said. This is just a general, I just wanna have a general conversation, I. Nor do I think the rest of the councilmen have any problem with. Paying you to do this.
Right, that's, uh, we need to hear.
When you look at the alternative, it's pretty easy to say.
That'd be quite a bargain.
When Josh called me, like, god.
Well, and I would. Yeah. Overcomplicated, but, well, and when you, when you. You had mentioned, I. Said like seventy or eighty thousand dollars.
No, I literally think you said this is gonna be a hundred thousand, and I said, no, I don't think that's right.
Truly unbelievable. Well, I just think it's because you want my honest opinion. It's not that bad, it's because it's the city, and people think, oh, it's a city.
Ten percent engineering isn't. Isn't a new idea, I mean, that's, that's kind of.
Thirty five million dollars full edition or a three hundred thousand dollar shed, it's gonna be, you know, it's. But it just looks a lot.
These firms have gotten to the point where, you know, like if they're working in the city of Sioux Falls. And somebody's putting up a big box retail store or whatever, I mean, the, the. The city isn't gonna allow them to even submit a plan unless all this stuff is included, you know, so I mean. You know, they, they've trained the monkey.
Yeah.
You know. Yeah, I mean, Josh knows this more than I, there are certain stamps of approval needed, that's city, I think you can get the. Yeah, and I mean, I, I do, I did, I did some, I talked to Josh about this, and I did some research, and I've got a. Worst comes to worst, we need to have a. Plan review done or whatever.
That is exactly what else.
I've got, I've got a guy, I've got a guy in Sioux Falls that'll do it. Pretty cheap.
Yep, they go for bids, see if it's three hundred and fifty one thousand dollars, it's the winning bid, you take that plan. Go to whoever, do a fee for service of, hey, is this gonna blow over? Type of thing. Um, anything over a hundred and seventy five thousand is competitive, full pledge competitive bid, which obviously knows.
That's easy, I see.
Yeah, oh yeah.
We can do that.
Uh, and then the other thing. That's we, some of the stamps of the pool, so full pledge competitive bidding, easy fees, you got that. And then, uh, sprinkle. Honestly, is whether it's, cause, I mean, she started talking about that and not specifics, but if there's going to be equipment. In there, if there's gonna be fuel X feet away, and if there's gonna be. Um, wood frame versus steel frame, and there's all kinds of different tables and choose your own adventure, basically, of what you need to have.
So, yeah, we can do some research there, she, she definitely made it sound like there were some. Uh, when, when Scott approached me about it, I asked about it, you know, putting a, a task shop up and. He, he kind of used the, I think it was like ten thousand square foot, now, basically, anything that's above ten dollars per foot you have. Sprinkles type system, um. She made it sound a little different, like there was big differences on square footage based off all steel versus wood and stuff like. She, she also kind of alluded to the fact that there's, there's a lot of ways around.
So I don't think.
I've got, I've got it in with the.
Yes, you too.
The head designer. Paul's, I can probably do more research. Yeah, that would be beneficial. And we're looking at about. And the number of Scott giving was twelve, and I think it's the oldest shop is ten dollars. The old one was sick. Yeah, just so you have that number.
Think I need a, a motion, as long as I see head nods of you're okay with Weston and I maybe incurring some fees from either slate building. It won't be. Jason moving for, I can't remember.
Even if it's a hundred dollars. All right, anything else you gotta talk about here? Hey, the next item is, uh, resolution ten oh six twenty twenty five. Right?
Yep.
Regarding cable franchise transfer.
Blue Peak is, uh, changing pans again, uh, they're not. Doing a full pledge sale, so we don't need to transfer the whole entire. Frank, we do a whole new franchise, we just need to, uh, consent to the transfer of control franchise, so. They filed what they call FCC Form three ninety four, which I have never seen before in my life, so let's have reached out to Kennedy and Raven. Um, in the past, we have used a different firm, um, that firm is representing XL in our contested case. At UC, and so just decided to keep everything on our. Even though they'll touch each other, obviously, um, the electric and this cable franchise, but. Uh, Mr. Boss there, uh, reviewed the form and all of the incorporated or enclosed financials and said. Good to go, uh, repotting in the. Result, revolution, ten oh six, twenty twenty five.
No questions to your motion? Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all favors say aye.
Aye.
Falls, no motion carried, and then, uh, number ten is a rehab on a sanitary sewer, um.
So sewer rehab, uh, budgeted, three year, fifteen thousand dollars, even. Um, this helped out Cherokee, it's been fantastic. We, the, the brand was to get this on the next council meeting, I was scheduling it all with the guy, he just got me some numbers, so. Ready, uh, but then he called today and asked if he could come tomorrow. And they had a bunch of things changed, um, they're gonna be in the area, and I said, well, let me talk to the council, I think it's fine. All we're really asking for you guys is a notch to the C limits, we won't go, we. Everything is billed out by linear foot, he gave me that, there were very small increases, went from like a hundred and five, or what, one forty. Floors went up, I don't know, it's not very much, but either way, we've got what we wanna do and we'll keep it fifteen thousand dollars.
Uh, Christian, how many more of these?
Well, there's, we keep finding more. You, you, you have certain manholes that, you know, obviously, they're like, who's gonna get in that?
Sure.
A good, a perfect example, which is kind of a surprise, was that tech selling. There's a manhole in there, we've always known about it, but never had a whole lot of reason to access, now you've rubbed it all out, so we got there, it had been done. Years ago, it's one of the first ones.
Okay.
But it still looks pretty good, um. We, we had this discussion, actually, we did a little bit more research on this last year, I, I think we're pretty close. But, gosh, the product they have is so good, there's some patchwork that can be done on some of the earlier ones, we might kind of start going back. Honestly, we've been a couple storm sewers this year too, which obviously, we're not super concerned about. But some of those structures are, people, groups are falling in, you know, we do this. You know what I mean, we get a really nice finished product, they do.
That's fantastic.
It is very good, you know, some stuff, you see it, some of the original stuff, it looks like, some stuff. Has some wear mainly around the path thing, you know, some flaking and stuff like that, not too serious, we can have them bolt that. That's how it's been done, both of them, a long time ago, so they can grow up in there and work on those too, but yeah, I mean, we are. Every year with Sal, it's. To, to get them, it's like, well, I really gotta search.
There's no other questions, you have a motion for that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Now, all favors say aye. There's no motion carried, the last item is approved street closure for Linden Fest on, uh, October twenty ninth. Uh, it's the twenty, on twenty ninth street between, um. Broadway and Linden. Second? Uh, Chris, uh, any further discussion, if not, all favors say aye. Falls, no motion carried with no further businesses or a motion to adjourn. All for, first and second, all favors say aye. Aye, meeting adjourned eighteen forty five, thanks everyone.